Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone who is watching tonight's city council meeting. Due to the ongoing concerns with COVID-19 pandemic and to ensure the safety of the public, we will be conducting this meeting remotely. If you are joining us via Zoom tonight, please use the raise hand feature if you'd like to speak during public comments. As we get to each item, our city manager will identify all public comments that have been submitted and/or if an attendee is using the raise hand feature to speak, at which point you will be unmuted. Hopefully, we'll soon be meeting in person again. Until then, let's get started. I hereby call the meeting to order. Steve, will you please call the roll?
Okay. Councilman Rossini?
Or Mayor Pro Tem Rossini?
Mayor Pro Tem Rossini, I'm sorry.
Here.
Let me start all over again. I've got everything all. Okay, Councilman Colacott.
Here.
Councilman Miles.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Rossini.
Here.
Mayor Zimmerman.
Here.
And as noted, Councilman Pitts has not yet joined us.
Okay. Today, I am going to go ahead and do lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We have a flag here. I'm hoping that we can display something on screen for Zoom. If everybody would please stand and say the pledge with me. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. To the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Me. Thank you. So we can move on to presentations. What's, let me just make sure. I don't see on the agenda our invocation. Did I miss that or is it maybe that?
That's under the invocation. It's right under the roll call. There's invocation dedication. It should be on the agenda.
Okay. Well, it goes here, right?
Yes.
I don't see it on my notes, but I know where it goes, so I'm going to do it now. I thought about this invocation as my first, wondering exactly what direction to take this in. And then my son completed everything for his Eagle rank in Boy Scouts. And I was very proud of that. And having done many invocations with the Boy Scouts, I thought that would be a fitting invocation for this first meeting as mayor. So I'm going to read a Scout's Prayer, which is attributed to Lord Baden Powell himself, the founder of Scouts. And it goes as such. Our Father, make us trustworthy, for there are those who trust us. Make us loyal, for through loyalty we reach our highest ideals. Teach us to be helpful, for through helpfulness do we forget our self-ish-ness. Make us friendly, for there are so many who need a friend. Train us in courtesy, for courtesy is the carpet of life's floor. Make us kind, for kindness is the oil in the cogs of life's machinery. Insist upon our obedience, for victory comes only to him who obeys. Make us cheerful, for cheerfulness is the green grass among the rocks in the path of life. And train us in thrift, for thrifty habits brighten our future. Make us brave, brave in the dark and brave in the light, but save us from becoming fakers in bravery. Help us to be clean, clean in thoughts, in speech, and in deed. And may we remember that our bodies are thy holy temples and that any abuse thereof is to tamper with thy great plans. And above all, oh God, please help us to be reverent towards all things which thou hast made for our enjoyment when we are in thy great out-of-doors, among the trees, among the streams, and on the hillsides. May we know it as thee who made the waters to flow, the trees to reach heavenward, and the mountains to endure to all ages. Amen. We can now move on to presentations. We will start with the Orange County Sheriff's Department.
So Captain Newtson has been, is in training this week and Sergeant Feeny, his replacement, was called away on special. So I have a copy of the total dissent for December. I'll distribute that to all, but they asked me just to indicate that total number of calls for service was 250. Criminal incidents, we had two grand theft, one petty theft, one burglary, one assault with a deadly weapon, one criminal threat, and one domestic assault. With respect to traffic incidents, the traffic accidents were up. We had five, or five, and then we had one hit and run. Citations, there were 51 issued in the month of December. And with that, I will publish, we'll publish those statistics in detail on our website for anyone who might be interested. And the sheriff extends our apologies for being called into assignment.
Thanks, Steve. Appreciate it. Next would be Orange County Fire Authority.
Hi. Good afternoon. It's Mark Moore from Orange County Fire Authority. I'm sitting in for Chief Hunter, who couldn't be here today.
Thank you.
I have his report since December 14th, last council meeting. 133 calls within the city, 42 incidents, mostly medical aids, respiratory, a couple falls. Of course, with COVID going on, we're having a lot of just generalized weakness type calls. But 133 through the city in the last month. This month, OCFA would like to remind everybody to check their smoke alarms. Two-thirds of all fires that occur happen due to non-working smoke alarms. And they can reduce your risk of dying by 50%. So if you guys would, check your smoke alarm to spread the word, and that'll be the word from Orange County Fire Authority. I have nothing further.
Thank you very much for your report. Do any other council members have questions? Okay. We can move on to the Villa Park Library. I believe we have the Villa Park Library in here.
Yes. Hi. Good evening. Thank you for inviting me.
Thank you.
Library service updates. The county has made it that we have no more late fines at OC Public Libraries. We're happy to share that late fees will no longer be charged. Of course, lost and damaged items still incur charges. An update on library programming. Our book chat will be held on Zoom tomorrow at 11:00 a.m. And the title this time is "The Little Prince" by Antoine de Saint-Exupery. And please call or email the branch, and we'll be happy to share the Zoom invitation with you. We do have another program inside the library. And we encourage children and teens to come to the library and add to our counter display, telling us what they plan to do in 2022. And some of the entries already submitted include children saying that they want to learn to read, obtain my Taekwondo black belt, and learn to count to 100. And all who participate will be entered in an opportunity drawing. And prizes are gift cards, which were graciously purchased by the Friends of the Villa Park Library. For materials, we have, I don't know if this will cause a lot of excitement, but we have federal tax forms coming by this weekend. And we will have Form 1040 and the instruction booklet. We're only receiving a limited quantity, so please come and get yours early. Unfortunately, we are not receiving any state tax forms. I'm still looking into trying to get some for us. The database tip for January is if you are looking to learn a different language, try Mango Languages Database on our website. Your library card and PIN code will get you started with video and audio content for all levels of over 50 languages on the site. And call or come by the library if you need assistance with this helpful product. And that's all I have, and we look forward to serving the Villa Park community.
That's fantastic. Thank you. I know my wife actually was learning Finnish and used the Mango Services for that, so thank you.
I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Fantastic. We do have a housing element update next. Steve?
Yes, thank you. In a second, I'll have John Douglas, our consultant, kind of update you. As you recall, just some background, we're required by law to submit a sixth element, six-cycle update by October 15th. The council adopted it on September 28th, submitted to HCD on January 6th, the date that it would be due. The HCD did respond with a letter to us, a whole-page letter with some of their concerns. We've had John, or John Douglas and myself have had conversations subsequent to that. So we wanted to provide the council with an update specifically about what HCD's concerns. The, I would, just in overall perspective, the HCD did not approve our draft, I mean our submittal. However, they did not deny it either. What they did is they asked for some more information in a number of areas, and that's what we'd like to clarify for you this evening. With that, I'm going to turn it over to John Douglas, and I'll add some as he goes along, but he's got a PowerPoint presentation for us. John?
Sorry, I was trying to unmute and it was covered up with another screen. Good evening, council members, mayor and council members. So yeah, to follow on what Mr. Franks just said, we'd like to just kind of walk through first just a very quick summary of some of the previous key points that we've made in previous meetings and then talk a little bit about the specifics of the HCD letter and how we propose to move forward. Let's go to the next slide. As, as we've discussed in our previous meetings, the reason we're doing this is because all cities in the SCAG region have to update their housing element for this planning period. So all of our sister cities throughout Orange County and the adjacent counties are going through this process right now. There is a process we've talked about previously, that is the state's review of local housing elements, and that's referred to as the certification process. There are some potential legal and financial consequences for cities that do not receive state certification, which is a letter from the State Department of Housing and Community Development expressing their opinion that the housing element complies with all the requirements of state law. This, this cycle that we're going through right now, the sixth planning cycle, is much more difficult than we've ever seen in the past, and it's more difficult for a couple of reasons. One is that the state legislature has adopted some much stronger laws regarding housing in the past few years. And secondly, the State Department of Housing and Community Development is interpreting both existing laws and those new laws in a much more stringent way than they have in the past. Just for context, I can tell you that of the almost 200 jurisdictions in the SCAG region, there are only three of them that have received a compliance letter so far from state HCD. None of those three are particularly relevant for Villa Park because they have different circumstances. Now, let's go to the next slide. So we've been at this process for well over a year, as Mr. Franks mentioned, and several public meetings. So we received the state's most recent letter just a few weeks ago, and we're going to talk about that in a little bit of more specifics going forward. Next slide, please. So the, the key requirements that are reflected in the housing element and in the state's most recent letter. First, there is a brand-new requirement in this planning cycle to study fair housing and to use the city's powers to affirmatively furthering fair housing. This was in our letter as an area that needed more analysis. This has been a difficult thing to get our arms around because it's a brand-new requirement for this cycle. So we're looking to see what other cities have done to, to gauge what the, where the goal line is with regard to the state's approval. The second key requirement, as we've talked about in previous meetings, is that is the requirement related to the regional housing needs assessment. And cities have to demonstrate that they have appropriate land use plans and zoning that can accommodate the allocation, the RENA allocation to the city in all income categories. And the way the process works, as you recall, the state assigns a total share of statewide need to SCAG. And then SCAG develops individual allocations to the various cities and counties. It's important to keep in mind that these RENA numbers are not a development mandate or a quota. They are a planning exercise, but it's a very important planning requirement because if cities cannot demonstrate that they have adequate capacity based on their current land use and general plan and zoning, then they must rezone property to create additional capacity. And obtaining the state certification of the housing element is dependent on convincing HCD that we have appropriate zoning and that we have sufficient land that could accommodate the RENA. Next slide, please. So to recap, the RENA number for Villa Park, we were assigned a total of 296 units for this planning period. That's what we have to show that we have capacity for based on our land use and zoning regulations. And we, we have what I've maybe called in the past the three-legged stool of how we are going to accommodate that. And the three legs of the stool are potential future accessory dwelling units, the parcels in the town center where City Hall and the library sit and the adjacent office building that are zoned for housing or mixed-use overlay, and also the Smith Basin property on the eastern side of the city, adjacent to San Diego Creek. And so those, those are the three components of how we demonstrate that we can accommodate the RENA. And there is an estimated potential of 328 units when we add all of those up, which exceeds the RENA. But the key question is whether HCD accepts our analysis that those are all realistic opportunities. Let's go to the next slide. So in, in HCD's letter earlier this month and a subsequent conversation that we had with senior HCD staff, we tried to, to home, home in on those points that they made in their letter. The first point, affirmatively furthering fair housing, this is going to require some extensive additional analysis. And we're looking at what other cities have done and what HCD has provided to cities as far as guidance goes. So we'll be doing additional analysis and data on that topic. Then with regard to the RENA, they specifically came back asking us to provide more analysis to verify the actual ADU production and building permits that have been issued in recent years because they use recent production, the recent issuance of building permits as the most relevant bit of information to project the number of ADUs going forward. So we're, we're looking into that to demonstrate that our numbers are correct. Then with regard to the other two categories, the town center and the Smith Basin, there are different requirements that apply when you have publicly owned property. In the case of town center, the city owns one of those parcels. And in the case of the Smith Basin, it's owned by the Water District. And so the state is asking that we provide additional information and analysis regarding a specific schedule that would encourage the development of those properties during the next eight years, the planning period that we're working on. And also to analyze the feasibility of development on, in both of those areas. Things like, for example, the wetlands and the geological issues and sensitive habitat and the access to utilities for the Smith Basin property in particular. And then the state asks that in cases where, where we are assuming that certain things will happen, they ask for some contingency that would, that would backstop those properties if, if the assumptions that we put into the housing element do not come to pass. So that would be, for example, if, if future actions do not move in the direction of development of either of those properties, then HCD is looking for some fallback position or commitment on the part of the city to, to fill that gap if those things don't happen. So let's go to the next slide. And so our, to wrap this up, our recommendation for the council tonight is any questions that you may have. If there's public comment on this item, we're happy to respond to that. And we're suggesting that you provide direction to us to continue our discussions with the various parties and then come back to you with a status report at your February 22nd meeting. So that concludes my remarks, and I'm happy to respond to any questions.
John, I can, I want to add a little bit to the, going back, go back a slide if you would, Alyssa. If you look at the ADUs and the number we had to reach was averaging 12 a year. And the HCD is using numbers that were 2020-based. And at that time, we were anywhere from eight, 10 to 12 that we were approving. In 2021, we approved 18 that are out the bill of the permit. So on the ADU schedule, we're very much, and we, the actual numbers definitely fall in our favor, so I want to make sure. One of the things we have, and you'll recall, we've talked about this prior, that we have not yet adapted our, well, I guess we did in 2018, we adapted, we updated our ordinances related, city ordinances related to ADUs. Then they started changing the laws. So with that, we started to revise it, and then there were a new set of laws. So we instead changed our focus just to get the housing element submitted. And we've been deferring to the state laws at this point with respect to the approval process for ADUs. However, we are exceeding the target that we would have aimed for, to hit the estimated number of 96 over eight years. So we, last year, and the volume in January seems to be continuing just at that pace. But we do have that as a to-do, that's a priority that we have to do. I've spoken to several of the council members about this, that that is something that we will be working on. And so I would encourage anyone who had, any of the council members who have ideas about things that they would like to see as part of those ordinances, we can certainly incorporate. Obviously, we're, we're, have to work within the parameters of state law, but there are some, there is a little bit of latitude and things we can do, which we will try and incorporate that into the process. So I just wanted to give you an update on that. With respect to, and John and I both participated in these conversations, a specific to schedule, a specific schedule to encourage development and enhance feasibility. Those, those words are pretty much verbatim what they said. If you're going, as you know, watching a lot of football this weekend, you might have all, there, there was no specific goal line that said, here's what it's going to take to get us there. So what we've got to do is still continue those conversations, and our logic for the recommendation is to continue those and try and get, seek even more clarity from HCD because developing a specific schedule to encourage development on property we don't own is a little bit challenging. We need to know what that really means. And then an enhanced feasibility and suitability assessment. We know for a fact that other jurisdictions, Irwindale, et cetera, have had property built. In fact, the Honda Center is built on a similar situation. So I think there are numerous examples, so we, we intend to provide that additional detail to HCD. With respect to the contingency plan, I think it is just that, that we would have to have a clause in there that we won't, you know, have to go back and look at all this if, in fact, the HCD says no to, if, to any part. But I think what our goal is, is to seek more clarity from HCD. Unfortunately, we don't, this, the wording you see is pretty much what they said, and that doesn't get us a whole lot definitive where we are. We do know we do have some work to do, certainly with the enhancing of program analysis, affirmatively furthering fair housing AFFH, which is a funny acronym. But anyway, as far as that goes, we have a lot of work to do there, and that's, that's probably one of the more cumbersome initial things we're going to have to tackle because that, that is, that is problematic. There aren't many samples out there, if you will. So I just wanted to add that to what John said. We continue to work this as a priority. I think that we'll have some discussions, you know, internally, and we'll have, I think, coming back in February, we hope that we can come back and have a little bit more clarity and where we specifically know and where the goal line is and what, you know, what yard line we are even on. That's a difficult assessment at this point, but we wanted to give you an update right away so that you're all aware. Again, the positive is, from my perspective, HCD absolutely did not say no to any of our, of our three-legged stool elements. I think what they're doing is continuing to ask for more clarity. And where that gets us remains to be seen. But I think on a positive, I think we have that direction that I would recommend. We strongly continue forward in that direction and hopefully we'll inch toward a final line. We can answer, John and I are both available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas, and Steve. Appreciate it. Council members, are there questions that you have?
I have one.
Yes.
Sir?
What are they thinking in terms, what are the possibilities for contingency plans?
That's, I'll take a shot at it, John, if that's okay. I think what I heard was, look, if you have X number of units, any one of those composing a significant element, say they were not approved, what would be the plan of action? Because you're still going to have to meet your RENA target, and if you can't reach it, reach it with one of the stools, how are you going to sub that in? What that means, they didn't give us an answer, and that's one of the things we don't have clarity. They sort of said, develop a contingency plan. So we will try and work to see what that really means. I wish I had a better answer for you, Councilman. It's a good question. It's one we asked, but they certainly didn't give us any clarity.
Crystal, did you have something?
I did. It falls along the same lines with the contingency plan. And could it be as simple as simply stating that we would resume or revisit public input? And, you know, because it would be a year later, that the contingency plan would just be to revisit public input and hold other public hearings.
Yeah, I think, I think that's certainly a possibility. That would be our hope, that they allow us to have that sort of language. I don't want to identify contingency, meaning this is a plan, because I don't think that's what we do. I think what, what I suspect what would happen is that we would have, they would hold us and say, okay, we'll approve the plan, but your contingency, you have to have a clause in there that says, within two years, if there's not enough progress, you'll go back and revisit this, that, or the other thing. And I think that's sort of what the, the sense I received from them, and I'm hoping that we can get because I don't think it's appropriate for us to start identifying options and throwing them up to Sacramento at this point. We have a plan. It's a viable plan. It works well for the city based on what the input we received. And I think we continue forward there, and I think you're probably on to something, Councilman Miles. I think that that's sort of what we'd hope and the direction we're going to try and steer them in, is give us some time. And if, if something doesn't work out, then according to maybe schedule, then we'll sort of reevaluate our position and what it takes to replace those units.
That sounds fair. Are there any other?
This is Bob. Do we show that we will be in our current housing element update or draft? Do we show that we will be addressing the RENA in all income categories? Don't we identify, like in the Smith Basin, that we'll be addressing certain categories? And in fact, the three-legged stool, as you call it, that, you know, which elements will address which income categories? Or we haven't, have we not developed that yet?
Well, I think we will talk about that, and that's one of the things they're talking about with affirmatively furthering fair housing, enhance the program analysis on that. So we'll have to do some more work in outlining that. You hit on one of the nails, obviously, that they talked about, but that is, how are we ensuring that all, that there is fair housing? And, and not only enhanced that assessment, but are there programs that the city would be advocating or implementing toward that direction to help the process? So I think that's one of the things we'll have to, we'll have to elaborate further with HCD with regards to all of, all three of our elements.
Another question. How much is our overall contract with Mr. Douglas, and how much has been expended at this point?
I just believe we signed off the contract. I don't know the amount in total. But I believe we have like $9,000 or $10,000 left, John, if I'm not somewhere in that range, if I'm right.
That sounds right.
I don't have any figures in front of me. I can get the figures for you, but, but I think we're somewhere along that line.
And what is the total value of the contract?
I don't have that in front of me. John, do you know off the top of your head? I don't know.
Ballpark, it's around $50,000.
Thank you.
Okay. If there are no more questions, I think we can move along from here.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
It's Mayor Pro Tem Rossini. I had my.
Mayor Protembrosini had my little yellow hand up on there.
Perfect. I cannot see that from here. I apologize. Thank you.
That's okay. I just wanted to echo the sentiments of my fellow council members and I wanted to thank staff in particularly, for, in particular, for doing all the work that they have on this. And I look forward to hearing from them in the future on, you know, what, what additional efforts are being made and just like to move along on it. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Just as a note, from where I am right now, I can't see those hands raised, so if somebody could help me with that, I'd appreciate it. Just speak up. Let me know. So, Steve, does that conclude everything on the housing element update? Was there any other, anything else?
We'll be, we'll be coming back in February 22nd, our regular meeting, and hopefully we'll have a lot more, or more detail and more clarity that we can provide to everyone and move along. As the mayor, Protembrosini, I think we're all anxious to get this resolved. I think you hit it on the head. We want to, we want to get this certified and we want to be compliant with the state law and do it in a way that works well, as well as we can with the preferences of the residents of Villa Park and the council.
Yeah, I appreciate that there are some of those things that do seem like they're vague and that you guys are going to look into clarifying what it means to promote and what are contingency. I know, and the contingency plan, knowing how far out we need to plan, that seems pretty critical. If it's, we're going to have four years before we get to, we have to come up with something or if we have six months, that seems like that makes a big difference. So look forward to hearing back on, on what that is. So I did want to just bring up one thing, which was that I had restructured our meeting slightly. I know our other council members had probably noticed, I moved the council member meeting attendance reports back towards the beginning to be in line with some of the other reports that we're getting. So what that puts us at is the, where we are now is those council member meeting attendance reports. I also did want to note that I had actually meant to say, I will be adjourning this meeting with a moment of silence in honor of former Mayor Bill Nelson and his wife, Beulah. And with that, I'd like to proceed directly into council meeting, member meeting attendance reports, starting with the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District.
Thank you. So between last month and this month, there were five Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control meetings and I sit on two committees on that board. And usually when I give the report, I just lump them all together, but they'll go fairly quickly. So Wednesday, December 15th, was the joint budget meeting and building property equipment committees. And we were discussing, if you remember, a year or so ago, we talked about, they want to relocate. And then they pulled out of the deal on that one. We revisited that discussion to see if we were still in a hurry or if we were still just going to kind of wait and see if the perfect building came along and, or perhaps redeveloping the, the land that they are currently on. And we all agreed that we're just going to still sit by and wait and hopefully for some better, perfect arrangement to come. The second one was also the same day later on in that afternoon, and that was the operations committee. And that one was our director, wanted to have some input on the sterilized insect technique, technique, regional collaborative project. We had talked about that, about how there's, it's very expensive and we kind of decided that the radiation of the mosquitoes and then allowing them to go out in the population and mate and have infertile larva that are infertile. So that discussion took place, however, two of the counties that we were supposed to be collaborating with, both of their directors happen to be married and one of them got a job somewhere else. So they are moving and so this is on hold until those two counties find replacements. Then the next day was Budget and Finance Committee on Thursday, December 16th at 1:30. And that one was, we just met with the district auditors regarding the fiscal year 2020, 2021 independent financial audit. And there was an unchallenged audit report, which meant that Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control followed all of the accounting standards and procedures and it's, you know, a very positive report. Later on that day then, there was the Board of Trustees meeting and again, just the audit of the financial records with nothing to report out of the ordinary. And then finally, the general meeting that just occurred January 20th. And the report there is the West Nile virus in Orange County, there's three West Nile virus human cases, Buena Park, Anaheim, and Newport. The Newport Beach one was travel-related. 51 West Nile virus positive mosquito samples and seven positive dead birds. So unfortunately, we're not out of the woods for the West Nile. The next one was the invasive 80s. In 2021, they are now detected in all 34 cities and four unincorporated areas, which means 2,894 locations with 391 infestation areas. So yes, Villa Park does have the invasive 80s. We just don't have any of the West Nile virus positive ones, God willing. And then the new concern is dog heartworm. So the mosquitoes are now transferring heartworm into our pets. So make sure that, it's another reason to make sure that you tiptoss, take action and get all the possible sites for mosquito breeding out of your yard because there is an uptick and increase in heartworm in our, in our dogs. So make sure you talk to your vet about that and get your dog tested yearly. And then flea-borne typhus, there are now 24 cases. Anaheim has six, Cypress one, Fountain Valley two, Fullerton two, Irvine one, Santa Ana two, Tustin three, and Westminster six. And that's it.
Thank you. Yeah, I did want to highlight the, the heartworm. I know that's been one of those things that typically you think of not coming in our area as much and a lot of people will think that they can get away with not giving the heartworm medication, but now that we know those mosquitoes have that in our area, it's, it's fairly simple to make sure that your pet gets medicine, medication that prevents heartworm. So I'm glad you brought that up. Thank you very much. Does anybody have any other questions or comments on that? Hearing none. Moving on to Orange County Sanitation District, I want to give a brief update on supercritical water oxidation. In continuing OC SAN's course of providing leadership and innovation with the evaluation of emerging technology, OC SAN will partner with 374 Water Systems to demonstrate the efficacy of the supercritical water oxidation process at plant number one in Fountain Valley. The partnership will consist of procuring and operating a six-ton-per-day air SCWO, supercritical water oxidation, NIC-6 demonstration unit. The demonstration scale installation has the potential to solve several challenges facing OC SAN during solids processing costs, air emissions requirements for methane and power generation equipment, and emerging contaminants such as PFOS compounds and microplastics, food waste utilization, and efficient use of OC SAN treatment plant properties. This effort supports OC SAN's bio solids management policy to maintain a diversified portfolio for bio solids management options that utilize multiple contractors, facilities, and product markets while maintaining fail-safe backup options. The other item that we talked about in the board meeting was the OC SAN's Ocean Outfall Assessment, which was previously scheduled to occur in October. However, due to oil spill off the coast of Huntington Beach, that was put on hold. We're now ready to move forward with that work and that assessment will take place in April 22, once the wet weather season is over. There are a couple of other construction projects that are ongoing in Los Alamos, Westminster, and in Fountain Valley. Fountain Valley being the headquarters building, which is continuing to install two to three piles per day. And I will have further information on that, that update to the administrative building and the headquarters after the January meeting, which is tomorrow. Does anybody have any questions about OC SAN? Moving on to Orange County Fire Authority?
Thank you, Mayor. We have not had our meeting this month. It will be in two days on the 27th. And of items of note that are on the agenda are the election of Chair and Vice Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The Orange County Library Advisory Board delayed their meeting, hoping that we might have a, have gone over the peak of Omicron and could maybe meet in person next month. The Orange County Unified School District City Schools meeting also was postponed and we did not have a meeting over December. Law Enforcement Advisory?
No meeting, Mayor.
And then Villa Park Community Services Foundation, Councilmember Pitts is not here. I'm just asking, does anybody else have any Community Services Foundation update on that? I'm assuming none.
Yeah, just real quick, they, I don't believe we had a meeting in December with the events that were the sanitation and the boat parade. So I think there was a focus on that.
Perfect.
And there was no meeting because of the Christmas holidays.
Thank you. For Housing Legislative Committee?
No meeting.
Thank you. And then Bridges at Kramer Place Advisory?
The Bridges at Kramer Place, that actually, I reported on that at the meeting on 12/14. They had met on 12/7, but I was unable to attend.
Okay. And then the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee?
Senior Citizens, we met on January 14th. And this one, there was installation of a whole bunch of new committee members. And so we actually just went back over Roberts Rules of Order and Brown Act for all of the new people.
Excellent. Okay. So then that moves us on to public comment. At this time, we will review comments from members of the public to address any off-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items unless authorized by law. We will also be reviewing public comments on each addenda item. Steve, is there anyone from the public that wrote in or is utilizing the raise hand feature to comment?
We have, well, I'll give it a moment for the company, but I, in the meantime, we did have one written comment from a Todd Jackson on Churchill Lane. I'll briefly read it. It's very, very short. "In the last meeting I attended, I tried to see some of the liability our streets pose to children, the elderly visitors, and even ourselves. I hope these photos with measurements will better explain what it feels a potential liability for the city. Our streets have had little or no attention for the past 60 years and to just do a slurry coat, we believe would not take care of the issues we have on our streets. I like the Villa Park does have, not have streetlights or sidewalks in most areas, but our streets, that adds the risk of someone not being able to see the gaps or uneven asphalt and cracks of just our streets. Potential liability for the elderly. We have a lot of homeowners with parents and even grandparents. The street creates a trip hazard as they go from their car, canes, walkers, et cetera, only make this issue worse. Handicap, wheelchairs, walkers, canes, crutches, et cetera, can easily get stuck in some of the gaps or hung up on uneven asphalt that are causing someone to fall. Finally, children, bikes, skateboards, rollerblades, tricycles, scooters can easily get caught in the gaps, causing falls that could result in head injuries, broken bones. These cracks are being, the cracks being on the sides of streets cause even more trouble for children as they stay to the right as cars pass." That was the only written. As far as the hands up, I'm not sure exactly how to undo them. Alyssa, help me. We have one that says home. That, by the way.
That may, that may be me, Councilman Colacut.
Okay, then we have Kathy. Alyssa, how do we undo, how do we open that up? Kathy is unmuted, if you want to, she can speak. You want to unmute her? Well, is there, Kathy, can you unmute yourself?
Okay, how about that?
That works.
Okay, perfect. Okay, hi, guys. Thank you for letting me join the evening, City Council and staff. I thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak. I actually submitted Todd Jackson, he lives right across the street from me. So if you look on the map on page two, you can see where Todd lives, right where the red line is. And I live directly across the street from him. And, okay, so the reason why Todd wanted me to submit this, because he is out of town and was unable to speak, so the reason why he, he did this report and all these little findings on, like on page, let's see what's that? It is on page three, where it shows a lot of the descriptions and how deep the cracks are and everything. He has a tape ruler, a yellow tape ruler, so you can see how some of them are from about seven to nine. I mean, there's one that's one inch, but it goes in depth. He just did the front of his street, I mean, in front of his house. His is just a slight indication of what the rest of our streets are like on page four. There's more there as well. And then he also tipped pictures of the diameter of the wheels, like of the walker, knee scooter, training wheel, bicycle, and wheelchair. And he wanted to show you that those wheels can easily get into all these grooves that are in our street and the cracks and the divots and whatnot. But the other reason why he felt totally led to do this and have me submit this for you, so I quickly got all these copies over to you guys and had Steve have his staff help you see it on your computers. But it's because his son recently had, was injured and he broke his back. And so he's been slowly rehabbing at home, but he had a physical therapist. When I came home from my errands, he was walking down the street very slowly. I was surprised to see him on our street, but his walker was in the driveway because the physical therapist did not want him walking on our street with his walker because of where he can get stuck in a lot of the cracks and whatnot that you can certainly see. And so she was really, actually very surprised. I spoke with her right afterwards. I said, uh, his walker's up there. She says, well, it's worse with him trying to walk with the walker than it is slowly with me alongside with him. And she says, I've, I've done a lot of physical therapy appointments to a lot of people on our streets. And she was really surprised that ours looked so bad as it was in our nice neighborhood. And I go, yeah, you're right about that. I've been trying to, to put a bug in our city council's bonnet about this. So anyway, so, and also, he also wanted to make it clear, it's, it's a crazy liability too, if any of our grandkids or elderly parents and whatnot, you know, could get seriously hurt. So he was just concerned because his son is rehabbing right now. And that just brought him even, you know, more avid where he wanted to let you guys know that he just did a small little section in front of his house. And if all of us 15 houses did that, you would have like a pretty thick binder by now, you know? So we just wanted to just let you know that this is very serious, you know? And being that he broke his back, I was surprised. I already saw him walking on a shoot, but just walking is very crazy to even do when you're seriously, but he needs to do that for his therapy.
Right.
So, okay, well, enough said. I have some other comments to make, but I'll reserve that for the next City Council meeting I'll attend, because I didn't want to shadow his, his report and his findings here. So I'm hoping you guys have a chance to look at this carefully and evaluate some of the things that he covered. Thank you so much for your time. I really appreciate it.
Kathy, thank you for your comment.
Thank you so much.
I also have Mary Beth Belson, who has her hand raised. If Alyssa, you could unmute her. Mary Beth, I think you're muted. If you unmute, I think you're.
Mary Beth, are you there? Can you unmute and talk?
I, I can now.
Perfect. Yes, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. By the way, Zoom is working very well.
Excellent.
I want to draw, this evening, I want to draw the residents' attention to a 2022 ballot initiative to overturn California Senate bills nine and 10, usually referred to as SB nine and 10. In particular, I want them to pay close attention to a ballot initiative to overturn them. Why are we concerned? Well, passed in 2021, SB nine and 10 abolished zoning for single-family residential lots in every city in California. The bills enabled- The bills enabled development of up to six units on an existing or new single-family residential lot, regardless of zoning laws and in the impact on necessary infrastructure. SB nine and 10 are the law, and they're effective in 2022. So what impact will it have on you? Well, when you see a house with a for sale sign, there's the potential that it will be sold to institutional investors and developed from multiple market rate rentals. There will be an impact, parking, there will be an impact on just, just our whole, the whole environment of Villa Park. So how can you stop this madness? Well, there is an organization called Our Neighborhood Voices, which is organizing to put an initiative on the 2022 ballot to put zoning and land use back under local authority permanently. So what can you do? Well, it's an important initiative. First thing is donate. Go to ourneighborhoodvoices.com to view the initiative. You can also donate from that. I want to bring, I mean, everyone should understand that this initiative is going to be very expensive. There are, there is big money backing it, and it's, and getting this initiative going is going to be an expensive effort. The other thing you can do is sign the petition. There are petition certificates out in front of Ralph's, look for them, go up to them, take an opportunity to find out about the initiative. Sign. So thank you, and thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Mary Beth, thank you very much for your public comments, we appreciate that. Steve, are there any others?
Yes, I have my hand up.
Yeah, I've said, Councilman Colacott has his.
Steve, I, this Councilman Colacott, I've got my hand up.
Please, proceed.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to speak in remembrance of Bill Nelson. I may take just slightly over three minutes, but I'll try to be as close as possible. Councilman and past mayor, Bill Nelson, passed on January 14th, and his wife Yula passed on Jan, six days later, on January 20th. Bill and Yula are survived by their four children. Bill was born in the town of Plaski, Tennessee, in 1938. Plaski is a small town about the size of Villa Park, located just above the border with Alabama. Plaski is known as the site where Confederate veterans organized the first chapter of what became known as the Ku Klux Klan. To meet his objective of leaving Plaski to find a better place, Bill began a lifelong commitment to public service when he joined the United States Air Force in 1958. Upon honorable discharge at March Air Force Base in 1962, Bill first pursued his education at a community college, then on to complete his BA in economics from Cal State Dominguez Hills. He then earned his Master's in Business Administration from the University of Southern California and proudly became a member of the Trojan family. Bill Nelson and his family resided at their home on charter for nearly 40 years. During this time, Bill was involved in a number of civic and community activities. Perhaps the first of these was the Villa Park Little League. Bill served as a member of the 2002 to 2003 Orange County Grand Jury, and then as a director of the Orange County Grand Jurors Association of Orange County for six years. Recognizing Bill's financial expertise, the council appointed Bill to the Villa Park Investment Advisory Committee. On quote-unquote retirement, Bill became a Realtor, working locally with Ron Akonero. As a Realtor, Bill became active in the Pacific Western Association of Realtors, or PWR, an 18,000-member trade organization that provides services to the real estate industry. During his time as president-elect and president of this organization, Bill led a team that found, purchased, and extensively remodeled their current headquarters, built what is now their current headquarters building. This was so successful that PWR named their boardroom the William E. Nelson Boardroom. In 2009, PWR developed a deep deficit due to the downturn in the U.S. economy. As treasurer, Bill developed strategies to not only recover, but to develop a healthy financial surplus. In 2003, Bill was appointed to the Orange County Cemetery District by Supervisor Bill Campbell, an appointment that continued until the day of his passing. As a trustee of the Cemetery District, Bill championed the development of the Gypsum Canyon Cemetery, and more recently, supported development of the Orange County Veteran Cemetery in Gypsum Canyon in cooperation with our supervisor, Don Wagner. And this will come up as Agenda Item 11 on today's agenda. Reports of, reports of both of these highly anticipated facilities are currently in the media and will support our community's needs for decades. When completed, Bill and Yula will be relocated to the Orange County Veteran Cemetery. As a Cemetery District trustee, Bill became an active in the California Special Districts Association. I attended the annual conference of the association in Monterey when Bill was elected to president. To put the prestige of Bill's accomplishment as election to president in, into perspective, there are 2,894 special districts in California, but only 482 cities. In sheer numbers, the California Special Districts Association dwarfs the League of Cities. As the, as the conference, at the conference, the esteem and affection and admiration of the board members for Bill was clearly evident. In fact, since the 2014, I've met many elected representatives throughout this county and the state that knew Bill, and all had the highest regard for Bill and for Yula for their public service. Bill served as a board member and treasurer of the Community Services Foundation, where he was involved in Villa Park's 50th anniversary and gala. Yula was also active in public service. Following retirement as a manager for Pacific Bill, Yula earned a teaching certificate and taught high school students in disadvantaged communities in South Central Los Angeles. In addition, Yula volunteered as a court-appointed special advocate, or CASA. CASA provides powerful, a powerful voice and meaningful connection for children who have experienced abuse, neglect, and abandonment. Bill and Yula were a public service power couple. In 2014, Bill was elected first in a slate of six candidates to the Villa Park City Council and served as our mayor in 2017. He chose not to seek reelection in 2018. As a fellow councilman, I quickly recognized Bill's intelligence, experience, and wisdom, and shrewd insight, jokingly referring to him as the wily Bill Nelson. Bill laughed when I called him that, but it was true. Until recently, as last month, I regularly saw his advice, guidance, and insights. I already miss my time with my good and wise friend. Prior to committing to his life in public service, Bill worked for more than 25 years in executive management as a finance professional with two major corporations, ARCO and the Southern California Gas Company. Today, Orange County Supervisor Don Wagner closed the Board of Supervisors meeting in Bill's memory. May he rest in peace. Thank you.
Bob, thank you so much, that was a very special, I appreciate it. Are there any other public comments, Steve?
Not that I'm aware of.
We do have, yes.
Mayor, I, I apologize, I'll keep it short. Pro Tim Rosini here. I just want to echo Councilman Colacott's sentiments. Very, Bill was a very special man, and he was a good friend. I, I will never forget the time that he and Yula came over, pardon me, to dinner at our house, and he, he was very, very special, and Yula was absolutely amazing. She took care of our kids as if they were her own grandkids, and I'll miss him very, very dearly. On that note, you know, we've had a lot of people who have lost during the past year. I don't want to be grim, but I, I believe I have a duty, given my profession, and I pray to God I'm, I'm mistaken, or at least I'm, my, my concerns are, are not, are not founded. Have we checked on Councilman Pitts? Have we made a call? Have we done a welfare check at all on him? I, I'm just concerned sincerely. It's unlike him to do this.
I have spoken with him, and he was traveling, so when we talked about councilmember stuff.
Okay, but as long as somebody's had contact, that's all I'm concerned about. I just wish the best for him and his family, and as I do any of our Villa Park residents. And I really appreciate the testing, the touching message by Councilman Colacott. Bill and Yula were wonderful people.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Moving on to public hearing, we do have three, starting with number one. Our first hearing is to review and waive reading in full of all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda. I'll now open the hearing. Staff, please give the staff report.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. This is the regular agenda item we have to expedite our meetings, we recommend approval. Just for the record, because we are doing a Zoom meeting, we'll have to take a verbal roll call vote on each item, so I will, just for the record, I want everyone to know that.
Understood. Councilmembers, do you have any questions of staff?
So, yeah.
Second.
Thanks.
Second.
There wasn't anybody from the public that wrote in on this, right? I just want to make sure we're, we're covering the public.
Yes, we're covered.
Excellent. So we have a motion and a second. Steve, would you please call roll?
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Miles?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Rosini?
Yes.
Mayor Zimmerman?
Yes.
With record, passes 4-0 with Councilman.
Excellent. Item number two, our next hearing is the adoption of ordinance 2022-624, an amendment to Chapter 23 of the City of Villa Park Municipal Code, adding Article 23-24, establishing regulations for urban lot splits and two-unit developments pursuant to California Senate Bill nine. I'll now open the hearing. Staff, please give the staff report.
Thank you. I'm going to lead, lead this off and then hand off to Ray Pasqua. This is in follow-up to council direction. You recall when SB nine and 10 were first passed, the council took this very seriously, and we went into closed session to discuss various options and things. One of the outcomes of that direction from the council was to bring forth a ordinance that would address, to the extent we can, the parameters and make sure that we had all the restrictions, et cetera, in place, so that to the letter of the law, we could comply with SB nine and 10, but at the same time, not just provide an open door to whatever might happen. So this is, in fact, that, it is a, an effort to follow up on, on the council direction as led by Mayor Pro Tim Rosini on this some time ago. So I think what we, I'll lead over to Ray, but as we see it, this is modeled after many of the other cities, and we view this as one of the, as, potentially as restrictive as we could possibly be under SB nine and SB 10 provisions. Ray, do you want to fill in the details?
Yes. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. On September 16th, 2021, the governor signed Senate, I'm sorry, our SB nine into law. Briefly, Senate Bill nine requires that cities approve the subdivision of single-family residential lots into two lots, and to approve housing developments containing no more than two dwelling units on each of the lots that meets specified criteria without a public hearing. For SB nine projects, the city's review is limited to objective design standards, but in no case can these objective design standards preclude the construction of up to two dwelling units on each lot, or preclude either of the new dwelling units from being at least 800 square feet in size. Also, the city's zoning, excuse me, subdivision ordinance currently prescribes that the subdivision process requires city council review and approval. However, SB nine now requires that city approve a subdivision map for urban lot splits that meets specified criteria without a public hearing. For SB nine urban lot splits, the city is limited to imposing objective design standards, and no public right-of-way dedications or construction of off-site improvements. However, easements required for the provisions of public services and facilities may be imposed. As mentioned in the staff report, there are many single-family residential zoned lots that are eligible for urban lot splits and two-unit developments. However, there are several that are not eligible, including parcels that are located in environmentally unsafe or sensitive areas, parcels that require the demolition of affordable housing, parcels that have already been subject to urban lot splits through this urban lot split process, parcels that are adjacent to a parcel created through an urban lot split if the owner or any person acting in concert with the owner subdivated, subdivided the adjacent parcel. Any proposed urban lot splits where the building official makes a written finding based on a preponderance of the evidence that the proposed project would have a specific adverse impact on the public health and safety, or the physical environment, and for which there is no feasible method to satisfactorily mitigate or avoid the specific adverse impact. City staff is adding Article 23-24 to Chapter 23, which is the city's zoning ordinance of the municipal code. Included in Article 23-24 are the objective design standards for urban lot splits and objective design standards for two-unit developments, which are provided in Exhibit A of Ordinance Number 2022-624. Here are some of the objective design standards for an urban lot split. That the parcel be located in a single-family residential zone, that the two new parcels be relatively equal in size, a 60/40 maximum split, that each new lot be at least 1,200 square feet in size, that the property owner shall occupy one of the housing units created by the urban lot split for a minimum of three years. Also, here are some of the objective design standards for a two-unit development. One parking space per unit, with some exceptions required by state law. Building separation, landscaping, and lot coverage requirements shall apply. Short-term rentals are prohibited. Mobile home parks, or mobile homes and RVs shall not be used as SB nine housing development. Exterior design shall be compatible with primary dwelling, if applicable, and with surrounding neighborhoods to the greatest extent possible. The height shall not exceed 16 feet, and shall be single-story. No ADU or JADU shall be permitted on a lot which contains two SB nine housing units. No SB nine housing development shall be permitted on a lot that has non-conforming uses. Solar panels shall be required for every SB nine housing development to the extent sufficient to meet the electrical load demand of each unit. So for this ordinance, public hearing notices were posted 10 calendar days prior to this meeting, as required by the city's zoning ordinance. Public hearing notice was also published in the Orange County Register, and to date, I have not received any comments verbally or in writing. The recommendation for City Council is to introduce and hold the first reading of Ordinance Number 2022-24, and direct staff to schedule a second reading and adoption of Ordinance Number 2022-624 for the February 22nd, 2022 regular City Council meeting. That concludes my remarks, and I am available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Councilmembers, do you have any questions of staff?
Councilman Rosini has his hand up.
Mayor Pro Tim Rosini?
Mayor Pro Tim.
Please.
You're unmuted.
Just a question. Have we looked at other cities, both LA, Inland, and Orange and San Diego counties, as far as the various iterations, variations, that they have? I understand that this is, in staff's opinion, the most restrictive and yet compliant version of an ordinance, and best for us to adopt, and I'm, I'm not a professional planner, but I am very, very concerned, as I, as I've mentioned in, in comments about this matter. And I'm just wondering if we, before we even have, and I don't know if this effectively is considered already the first reading. the first reading of the ordinance, but I'm wondering if we shouldn't have a discussion about what different cities are doing and what different options are available to Californians as it pertains to this ordinance. This ordinance has the potential of completely altering the fabric and framework of what our city founders had in mind, of what I would venture to say a majority, an overwhelming majority of the residents of Villa Park have in mind when they purchase their home here and a catastrophic impact on our infrastructure as well as on our residential streets. I am very concerned and I would, for the record, like to hear what each council member has in mind on this. And I'd like them to go on record and publicly and express ideas on what we can do about this.
So just for the record, and I'll let Todd sort of, this is modeled after the cities that we, first thing we did was collect all the data and other from other cities. So I think Todd can weigh in on the legality of all that. But basically, we have, when I said it's most restrictive, is we have taken the most restrictive elements of each of the respective cities that we have pulled up and taken those elements and put them into our draft. So obviously, we would look for input. If the council wants to change something, they certainly can. The reality of SB 9 and SB 10, there are certain things that cannot be touched and I think that's something that Todd will clarify, that there are parameters that we can't. So I would agree with you. These are still not something that we would draft from the beginning. But I mean, with respect to SB 9 and SB 10, those provisions are state law at this point, notwithstanding any sort of future initiative that may or may not change that. But with respect to the initiative as it stands, we've taken other cities as the example and we are modeling ours at and taking the most conservative view possible and pulling those up. So we have, in fact, surveyed and Ray could attest to that and I think Todd can attest to that. We've taken those others and surveyed those other cities to ensure that we had elements and everything that we have included here or we haven't missed something along the way. So with that, I certainly, Todd, you had wanted to say something?
Yeah, so we went through in the other city where I'm city attorney, Yorba Linda, a very exhaustive, detailed process to determine where there were the regulatory areas that the city could fill in the cracks and provide local regulation, yet still not run afoul of the law. And in Yorba Linda, we did a very exhaustive search on that. The, Yorba Linda's been at the forefront of trying to deal with these RENA issues in the SoCal region. Ray did collect input from a number of cities, primary of which was Yorba Linda, which we put together and is incorporated in large part into this ordinance. So in direct answer to the Mayor Protem's question, yes, in my opinion, this is the broadest extent possible that we have on the local level to enact and keep local regulation, yet still be in compliance with SB 9. As to a second point of, you know, because surely there's more information out there somewhere and things maybe could be improved or tweaked in the future. I would recommend, though, that if you're satisfied with the ordinance, that we would go forward with this first reading and then it would come back for a second reading because then it goes into effect 30 days thereafter. We probably want to have something on the books which we can enforce as quickly as possible. And if we want to make additional improvements down the road, then we could do that. But I think it would be good to proceed forward with this as amended, as reviewed by the council, and then come back and make any improvements that we may find along the way.
Thank you, Todd. I think that, well, let's go to, I'll defer to other council members. If Councilmember Colacott, looks like you wanted to say something?
Yes, thank you. One thing I didn't see, the staff report pretty much parrots, I think, with the, or summarizes the state mandates. What it doesn't do and what I'd like to see provided particularly before, you know, next month is that an assessment of what will the residents experience as impacts from this ordinance. Resident Felison during the public comment period expressed one set of impacts that she anticipated. What is this, what is this going to mean to our residents? I think we need to let them know what this means. If nothing else, to help them understand why it's important to repeal 9 and 10. But, you know, let's tell them upfront, you know, if this goes forward as written, this is what we're likely to see in Villa Park. So whether it be impacts on parking, whether it'll be increased street repair maintenance, impacts on water service, impact on sewer, impacts on our schools, school traffic. You know, what does staff see as the impacts of implementing this as written?
So Councilman, if I could sort of, and I know you may have more, I just wanted to, this ordinance does not implement SB 9 and 10. Those are already implemented. We have no choice on that. This is a restrictive, this is a regulatory addition to SB 9 and 10 to limit to the extent possible that we can the impact of SB 9 and SB 10. So this is not implementing SB 9 and 10. Those are in law in place right now. So that was effective January 1st. So for the extent that we are.
I understand. I understand that completely and I think I acknowledge that. But I think it's only fair for our residents to let them know how is this going to impact our life here in Villa Park?
Bob, can I clarify real quick? Sorry, can I just ask for a clarification on this? You keep saying how this ordinance impacts them, but I think what you mean to say is how SB 9 and SB 10 impact them. You're not asking what our restriction?
In the ordinance which implements, you know, implements the 9 and 10. But, you know, what does this, what does this mean to every resident in the City of Villa Park? And also, I think it's worthwhile to look around to, you know, use our own minds to think about what actions we might be able to take as a council to mitigate these impacts once we identify them and what actions are other cities contemplating to mitigate the impacts, recognizing that this is law now, but what can, is there anything we can do to mitigate the impacts that we've identified?
So as to those points, there's really, as always, two options to take on the full bore impact of 9 and 10. One is always the litigation path and cities are trying to gather together forces to potentially file litigation against SB 9 and 10. And the second is the political path, which as previously told, mentioned, is the pending state initiative that's hoped to be on the ballot in 2022. As far as what SB 9 and 10 do to local communities, it is a degradation of local control and a breaking up of the essential nature of a residential neighborhood. Why do I say that? Well, one, if passage is prologue, when these types of laws in smaller locales have been facilitated, it's not as if just another family moves into another home. Often it is corporate interests that come in, buy up properties and then rent them over the course of time to various people. And with that, you often lose the interconnectivity that has come defined to define Walt Whitman-esque residential neighborhoods in America, right? So what we've tried to do in the ordinance is meet those types of things. And if you will notice, there are restrictions on the type of legal entities that can buy properties within the City of Villa Park to try and forestall those type of corporate entities coming in and just buying up neighborhoods, tearing down homes and then putting two in place and then moving on with their lives. There are also the utility and public infrastructure impacts, whether it be electrical, water, and then the impacts to the schools and the streets. Now, under SB 9 and 10, there are only certain things we can regulate. But as far as electrical impacts, you will see that for second units that we're requiring them to be able to establish their own electrical load because there's been a concern that it's going to overburden the electrical system and requiring solar panels or something similar in order to meet electrical needs. So we're trying to address both the neighborhood degradation and the infrastructure impacts that SB 9 and 10, which are state mandates, as we know, that are being foisted upon cities like Villa Park.
Todd, thank you. That's actually very clear and you made some excellent points.
I think you misunderstand my concern. My concern is, you know, certainly litigation is out of the question. We do not have the resources to go into litigation. But I think it's, as a council, it's, you know, we're looking at, you know, we've all read these SB 9 and 10 and the ordinance. There are going to be significant impacts to our neighborhoods. It's incumbent upon us as the leaders of our community to explain to them, to our residents, what might this impact be? Or what might these impacts be? But also, we should be, you know, putting on our thinking caps and thinking, well, is there any way that, you know, once we've identified these impacts, that we might be able to mitigate them? Not by eliminating the legislation, but, you know, is there anything we can do in the operation or the ordinances within our city to mitigate impacts, you know, the various impacts that we've discussed? And I, you know, if nothing else, you know, we need to make our, help our residents become aware of what these impacts are going to be before we adopt such an, these ordinances. I agree that we have to adopt an ordinance to implement 9 and 10. They are law. But let's explain to our residents, what does this mean? It's not just a 9 and 10, you know, just numbers, SB 9 and 10. This has a real impact on our residents. We shall help them understand what this means. You know, I'm looking to staff to help us do that.
Crystal, did you want to weigh in on this?
Yes, thank you. Well, I think we all have the right goal and intent of, you know, trying to protect our residential neighborhoods. I agree with Councilman Colacott. I think that, but I think maybe what I'm hearing from him is that maybe we could do like a special meeting or something specific to educate our community separate from what this particular hearing is about, and that's adopting this resolution to enable us to protect our neighborhoods, which is what staff has developed with the adoption of this ordinance. I guess for me, it's, I think we had thrown around some ideas, not litigation, but thrown around some ideas on how to try and protect, continue to protect our residents and the zoning. And I like also Mayor Protem's idea of perhaps we could have a special meeting of some sort that we could discuss these other ideas, kind of like what we did with the public hearing on the housing element, so we could openly kind of discuss these. But that being said, I also agree with Steve that we need to adopt something quickly or maybe it was Todd that said it, we need to adopt something quickly to put those protections in place and then be able to come back a month from now or 30 days after the final reading and be able to actually maybe fine-tune it. But that way, should anything happen between now and the final reading, we do have that protection in place so that we can mitigate the effects of the implementation of SB 9 and SB 10.
Excellent. Thank you. Can I ask just a point of clarification? Because my understanding is that what's presented here in this ordinance is exactly what Bob is asking for and that what the staff has done is thought about all of those things that we can do. And I just want to make sure that we're clear, this isn't an ordinance that enacts or enables SB 9 and SB 10. This doesn't create those or make them active. They're already active. This is actually that first set of restrictions that we want in place that is the beginning of the process of making sure that we do all of those things that prevent SB 9 and SB 10 from impacting our community. I personally have been speaking to a great number of residents. I gave a talk at Rotary and I've talked to a lot of people in the street and getting signatures signed. My biggest point that I think a lot of people don't realize is that SB 9 and SB 10 are designed for developers, that this is not something that is made to enhance neighborhoods in any way. It's, in fact, the opposite, as I think Todd just stated very clearly and I know we all understand this, but to make it clear to our residents, this is something that is primarily beneficial to developers for them to be able to come in and make lots of money off of land that we would rather see kept undeveloped or as it currently is because that's what generates community, that's what our infrastructure supports, et cetera. So just on those points of clarification, do you guys, did Steve or Todd, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
I'll just say, I mean, what you said is correct that, I mean, as we sit here right now, SB 9 and 10 are the law of the state, including the law of the City of Villa Park.
And this ordinance is not enabling those in any way. This is restricting them.
That is absolutely correct.
Thank you.
Councilman, I mean, sorry, Mayor Protem Rosini has a, his hand raised.
Oh, please, go ahead.
Let me try to bridge, I think, the communication divide here. I think Councilman Colacott is well aware of the fact that it's state law and that this is a restriction to the degree that's legally acceptable. But I think what he's trying to get from staff to impart to our residents, given their professional expertise, are the impacts in a quantitative manner on our streets, on our sidewalks, on our schools, on our electrical infrastructure, on our sewer infrastructure, all the things that might possibly be affected, whether it's parking or traffic or whatever. All the dilettorious things that frankly, investors that could care less about our community are just, you know, taking a blind eye to, that are just writing a check to Sacramento politicians to get this passed. I like, Crystal, I should, excuse me, Councilwoman Miles and Councilman Colacott are obviously supporting our neighborhood voices in the movement against, in the repeal of SB 9. Publicly, I've spoken to Peggy Huang of Yorba Linda about this matter and I'm very, very concerned about it. I'm okay with moving this matter forward, but I want to bring a couple more points to staff's point of view on this. And I appreciate the element of solar panels on the structures. I think that's a step in the right direction, but I'd like to go one step further. I would offer that, given the significant impact on our utilities, that all underground utilities to and from the house, as well as within at least a home or two of that residence, to the degree legally possible, transmission lines should be underground. If a developer is so inclined to do that, they should upgrade the utility system as a countermeasure to the potential draw because we are an extremely high fire zone in many parts of the city and certainly an elevated fire zone in all of the city. We regularly experience PSPS outages, as we've seen on Thanksgiving, as we saw roughly a week or so ago. And I don't think it's too much to ask those that really don't have a financial interest, that don't have a legitimate interest, it's only a financial interest, a familial interest, is absent, only a financial interest in our community, to take that extra step to mitigate that issue. Furthermore, we have substandard streets. And with our substandard streets, many of which are immediately within a mile, and I think that would be a good parameter, perhaps maybe even a mile and a half, should these particular developments should not be allowed. They should, they should absolutely not be allowed as part of the actual, and that's, correcting if I'm wrong, written into the legislation that they are prohibited. I understand that if you meet certain mitigations, well, how can you meet a mitigation when the public streets can't even handle the emergency vehicles plus the vehicular traffic plus the extra traffic that's going to obviously come from this new development?
Todd, did you want to address those two points legally?
So there are limitations in SB 9 and as to. So there are limitations in SB nine and as to what types of upgraded utilities and as a corollary, what type of fees for such utilities and public services that can be assessed and/or imposed upon developments, either as a second unit or as a new lot split? I think under the city's proposed ordinance, we have filled in those gaps where we can. But it certainly would not hurt to figure out if there's any way to specifically do that for the degraded streets area or other areas. So, I mean, that is something definitely we can look at, even though I personally have not seen that in another city, having done that. As to the undergrounding of utilities, that concern is obviously well-founded. There may be nexus concerns as to that, i.e. did this additional unit trigger the need for that particular action? So before we put that into the ordinance, I think that would require a little bit to study to meet that threshold, even though very understandable, given our situation in locale. I wouldn't want to put us in a position where we could be more easily challenged. So for that one, I would hold off on now, and I will report back to you by the second reading to see if we can include that as a possibility. I would not suggest adding that at this time without that further look at.
And just to clarify, when I say substandard streets, I'm speaking of substandard width, not necessarily in the pavement management index. Obviously, we have unfortunately quite a few of those. Simply the width will not provide the capability to handle the additional parked vehicles as well as the vehicular traffic, given sightlines. We already have issues with that on Mesa in the 19,000 block, 19,300 block, I should say. There's a tremendous issue with that, and that's immediately adjacent to an extremely high fire hazard zone. Thank you. I appreciate your comments.
Mayor Protem, I would argue potentially that is something that the building official through the objective standards for health and safety may be able to cite as a reason to deny the approval if there is not sufficient street availability for either emergency ingress or egress or safety issues. So that is a potentiality within that clause, within both the state and local law, for us to potentially reject property proposals.
So, so if I could suggest, I think the Mayor Protem has raised some good issues. Would it be possible, Todd, to approve the reading with the direction to staff to incorporate those elements if, in fact, it's legally viable in the second reading? Otherwise, if we include him for the first time in the second reading, we start all over again. That becomes our first reading, and it's a delayed implementation. So is it possible to include, to the extent he gives us direction, that those be incorporated into the reading? Or does it have to be verbatim at this time?
It has to be pretty verbatim. So I would suggest this, if the council be so inclined, approve first reading with direction to come back at the next meeting with those additional items for a proposal and potential addition. But at least at that point in time, then we'll have a second reading at the next meeting. We can either approve the second reading then, and then come back with an amended ordinance right away to add those additional elements. That would get us down the path quicker. And in the end result, we would get these types of things added as quickly as possible. But saying adding potentially additional language, if okay with the city attorney, in my mind, would trigger another first reading. Sadly.
Thank you. Appreciate your. Are there any other questions, any other discussion? Otherwise, I'll now close public hearing and ask for a motion?
I have a question.
I have a question still.
Okay, go for it.
Can't see my hand. Could we, in the ordinance, is it possible to limit the number of units per block? Is that legal, feasible?
Most likely not. We've done it to the extent we can as far as jointly owned neighboring properties.
Okay. So we couldn't put a max number per block, like the max number of SB nine urban lot splits per block couldn't exceed like three?
Probably not.
Steve, is there anyone from the public that wrote in or is utilizing the raise hand feature to comment on this item?
No, no, Mayor.
Okay. I think that's all of our discussion. Is there a motion on this matter?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Steve, if you could call the roll, please.
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Miles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rossini?
Yes.
Mayor Zimmerman?
Yes.
Passes four zero with Councilman Pitts absent.
Thank you very much. Item three, am I correct in saying this one's been postponed again?
Yes, it had to be included in the agenda because the action taken by the council on our last meeting was to continue it to this meeting. So with that being said, it is the variance number 2021-06 at 19391 Mesa Drive has been requested to be continued on February 22nd, 2022 city council meeting by request of the applicant. So we are continuing it until the date certain.
So Mayor, to be safe, this is Todd, we should have an official continuance motion so we don't have to renotice.
Sure. Motion, I'll second it.
Okay, there we go. Thank you. All right, Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Miles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rossini?
Yes.
Mayor Zimmerman?
Yes, thank you very much. That moves us along to the consent calendar, items four through 11. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine and are usually enacted by one motion approving the recommendation action listed on the agenda. Any member of the city council staff or the public may request an item be removed from the consent calendar for discussion or separate action. Council members, are there any items from four to 11 you'd like to remove from the consent calendar?
I'd like to remove nine and 10, please.
Nine and 10? Do I remember correctly, Councilmember Colacott, you wanted to remove 11, or is that?
No, I did not. I just wanted to point out that the Veteran Cemetery is something that our past mayor championed.
Great. I thought maybe you had other comments on it. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you. Were there any other items? Any of you wanted to poll? So I have items, agenda items nine and 10 polled from the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve the balance?
I'm moved.
In a second. I'll second. I'll second it. Steve, would you please call the vote?
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Miles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rossini?
Yes.
Mayor Zimmerman?
Yes. Thanks. We'll now take up the other items that were polled from the consent, starting with item nine. Staff, could you this is polled by Councilwoman Miles?
I'll let Todd basically deal with this one. This is the authorization to have a teleconference meetings pursuant to AB 341. Todd, do you want to give us the legal details?
Yeah, so previously, last year, the COVID period, well, I guess we're still in the COVID period. We'll always be in the COVID period, apparently. We were authorized to have remote Zoom meetings pursuant to the governor's executive orders. Well, those specific requirements in the executive orders pertaining to teleconference meetings were withdrawn and rescinded, and in its place, this assembly bill was enacted which allowed for continued teleconference meetings, ala the one we're having right now, if certain requirements were met pertaining to there still being a state of emergency and social distancing requirements being recommended and being in place. So obviously, the California Department of Public Health has put in masking requirements that have been extended to the middle of February, and the state's emergency under COVID is still in effect. So there doesn't need to be any local emergency declaration or anything of that nature, but those state actions trigger the city's ability under the Brown Act, under this new assembly bill, to have these teleconference meetings. As a requirement of the revision to the Brown Act, we are required to adopt a resolution making these findings, which do indeed support the need for the teleconference meeting. So that is the staff report and the resolution in front of you. Under the law, it has to be reaffirmed every 30 days, as long as we wish to continue to have these Zoom-type meetings. That's my report.
Councilwoman Miles, did you have a specific question, or has it been addressed by that comment?
So first, just for, you know, dotting i's and crossing t's, the title is listing the assembly bill incorrectly. It's supposed to be 361, and the title says 341, but that's not why I pulled it. As Todd mentioned, you know, it's the state the state emergency as issued by the governor, and that we are not currently, unless I'm mistaken, under a local emergency. And I guess my, not concern, but my comments on this, I'm not in support of doing this every 30 days. I believe that we should, quote unquote, get back to how we used to normally do the the meeting notifications if we had a teleconference or whatnot, specifically because there is no local emergency. Majority of individuals have either been vaccinated or recovered from COVID. The variants that are out there now are much more mild, and we can effectively meet with social distancing standards in place as we did back in 2021, where we separated into kind of two tiers. So my concern is that the, you know, the whole state of emergency, we are going out to dinners, and we are going to movies, and we are going grocery shopping, and we are having sports, and, you know, I think people are trying to resume their life as much as, quote unquote, possible and normal. And all this does is continue that concept of anxiety and fear, and I think that we're going to be faced with recognizing that the bigger pandemic is this anxiety that people are having, trying to come back and resume to normal. So this is not suggesting that we don't still take precautions. People can still be cautious and diligent and careful, but I just do not see the need for us in the city of Villa Park to continue with the AB 361, and we should resume back the normal guidelines as prior to the COVID pandemic. That's my comment.
Okay.
Certainly a policy decision for the council. All this does was facilitate, you know, this meeting. It does not need to be continued in perpetuity, policy decision. This basically just gets us out of having to post the notice on each of your personal residence doors, put it in the agenda what the address is, and you allowing people into your living rooms are all. That's really what this facilitates if the city still wishes to conduct remote meetings.
Are there any other comments?
Yes. Last year, I made a motion that was adopted by the council to allow continuation of participation in council meetings, not by Zoom, not necessarily require all the meetings be held by Zoom, but let's say if one of our councilmen is out of town for some reason, that they could call in and participate via Zoom. And is there a way that we can continue that? For example, you know, let's say Mr. Pitts wanted to call in tonight. He could call in and participate in our meeting. Is that, can council tell us if that's something we can do?
Well, you absolutely can still do that. We can always default to the normal Brown Act rules. People can all still teleconference in to the meeting. Under the old Brown Act rules, there are certain requirements, though. A majority of you have to be within the jurisdiction. You have to post wherever you are, whether that be a hotel in New York or a spa in Tokyo. That was a horrible example. But yes, that is definitely allowed.
Good.
But that would require us not extending AB 361.
So that would be, you approve it tonight, which would affect the meeting tonight. It does not affect our next meeting. The council has the authority not to approve it next time, and it doesn't happen. Is that correct, Todd?
Yeah, you know, and it really, you know, traditionally, it's sort of, and correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, but it's sort of traditionally been the mayor's call as to the type of meetings we have for this. I mean, you know, if the, I mean, at the end of the day, whatever the mayor's call is, can be, is subject to a majority vote of the council, but yeah, this does not bind us to anything. And we could clearly go back to February to normal meetings with the allowance of people, council members, teleconferencing if they wish, but not being required to. Absolutely.
So this only stays in effect for 30 days?
Yes, and if we were to do it, if we were to do the next meeting, we'd have to adopt the same resolution at the next meeting.
So this only affects what we're doing tonight in effect?
Yes. I put it on and able to effectuate this meeting. Correct.
Given that, I would recommend that we probably go ahead and pass this to make sure that this is covered. And then it's my intention that we get back to having meetings. I would love to see you guys all and be next to you and talk to about this stuff. I think, given the numbers that we saw, the spike in cases in the city of Villa Park, the number of staff that were impacted, I know on a personal level, I had a very good friend who contracted COVID and then through complications has passed. And I know that the larger the number of cases that we have, the larger number of those mortalities and other rates that we have, the chances to go up. So I would like to see us do everything we can to reduce those numbers and the impact to certainly our own citizens and to our council and staff. Given that, Mayor Miles, did you have an amendment or something that you wanted to propose for this?
No. No, I did not. I just wanted to make my comments about it, and this does not mean I'm not sensitive or cognizant of COVID numbers or different variants or whatnot. This is specific to having to do this every 30 days. But let's get back to what's, quote unquote, "normal" from the point of view of agendized meetings or teleconferencing in and being able to teleconference, should we so choose or not. So nope, I did not have an amendment.
Excellent. Again, I agree. I would love to get back to that as we can. So do we need to have a motion on this to?
Yes, you need to approve the resolution. So yes, there would be a motion required.
I'll go ahead and make that motion. We approve this. Do we have a second?
I'll second the matter. I echo Councilman, excuse me, Councilwoman Miles's sentiments, as well as yours, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Steve, could you call the vote, please?
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Miles?
No.
Mayor Protem Rossini?
Yes.
Mayor Zimmerman?
Yes.
Passes three to one.
Councilwoman Miles, you also had polled 10. Did you have comments that you wanted to make on that?
I wanted some clarification, so if staff could give a report on this.
Sure, I'll be happy to do it, and then we can have our city engineer fill it in the details. So this was 1973, an easement was approved for a specific parcel located at 9662 Crestview, and there was for bridle trail purposes. The easement width varies anywhere from 10, 20 to 30 feet wide length for the property. It's approximately anywhere from 10, 20 to 30 feet wide length for the property. It's approximately 400 feet. The difference in the elevation is approximately 70 feet between the, the two streets. So it's a significant grade. The trail was never improved in disarray condition. There's no continuous sidewalk in the trail and/or trail on Crestview Circle. There is a decomposed granite DG trail on Cannon Street. The owner has requested for access to his property that he, that the city vacates to allow him to create access for his property at Crestview Circle. Akram, do you want to fill in any details?
As was mentioned, that really the trail is, varies in width, and it's very steep. It's never been improved or anything. It's hardly been, matter of fact, we haven't seen anybody that is utilizing it. So it is a, in a, a not acceptable condition, and it's not really passable. The property owner is, want to, to improve the area and put a driveway in order to access his property at the bottom, as he's planning to build a second home in, on his lot. His lot is very, it goes from Crestview all the way to Cannon, which is 400 feet in length. So that is one of the really reasons, the main reasons is for him to request the abandonment. Also, in the, that easement, there has been some utilities been installed for the adjacent property at the bottom of, and which fronts on Cannon. And because that's the, one of the easiest ways to provide the gas services and also water services. So there is been some utilities allowed in, in that, within that easement. In order to vacate that easement, it's necessary to follow certain procedures, which is to adopt a resolution to, to declare the intent to abandon the easement. And with that, then a public hearing will be set up for the next meeting and to be discussed in public and to also receive any comments from the public or the residents on that subject. With that, you know, I recommend, the staff recommend that the city council adopt the attached resolution. It's mainly to, to set the public hearing for the second meeting in February 22nd, 22nd city council meeting.
Correction, we're right. It's the only meeting in February.
Yeah, the only, yes, I apologize. It's the only meeting in February. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you have.
Thanks. I do have some questions. First, is the, the property owner, do you know how long he's owned that property?
For a long time.
Okay.
I don't know exactly, but he is, the one on Crestview, it's been, he owned it for a long time.
Okay. And, and you said that he was planning on building a second home on the lot. Is, is that an ADU, or is that, like, is he gonna split it? Do you know if he's gonna?
It, it is, it is a large lot, and it can be, I mean, it will meet the split acreage. So it would not be an ADU. It would be a second lot or second parcel.
Okay. And then you said that his plan is to turn that, that easement, once vacated, into a driveway to access that second home? Granting, granting the vaca, the vacating that easement or granting the motion to, to abandon that easement? That is a separate issue than him, than granting him access for that driveway, correct? So he would have to come and do a whole thing for?
He'll have a grading permit, etc. plans, yes.
Okay. So they're, they're not granting the abandonment. It's nothing to do with the driveway. That's just what his intent is.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
And Mayor, if I could elaborate on the process, under state law, the vacation, and it's a weird word, I always thought, vacation, the city giving up the property right of an easement that it has. It's a two-step process. So what's in front of you tonight is that we are setting a public hearing. So we're not deciding anything tonight. We're just setting a public hearing where this, as Akram said, will come back for an actual public hearing. We have to put posts, post notices on the property and do a bunch of notifications. At that point, you will make the decision whether or not to vacate, as it were, the easement.
Thank you.
Thanks for the clarification. Any further discussion on this item? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Steve, could you call the roll, please?
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Miles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rosini?
Yes.
Mayor Zimmerman?
Yes.
Passes four.
Thank you very much. That moves us along to new business. Moving along to item number 12, our first item in new business is the award of engineering design contract for fiscal year 2021, 2022, annual street rehabilitation project. Staff, could you please give the staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the next step that we need to take in moving forward with the approved 2122 street rehabilitation project. We went out for RFP to select a firm to do the design work. We received six, we went to RFPs, we received six proposals. A number of consultants responded. We basically, the city contract engineer is one of the firms that responded, so he was not involved in the evaluation process. The respective bids were all responsive and very comprehensive. All six firms were, are very well qualified. Over the least expensive, the lowest proposal cost was submitted by Cabar Engineering at a cost of $80,425. And with that, they have extensive experience in street rehabilitation projects throughout Orange County and Los Angeles County. And we would recommend, they're an excellent firm, we would recommend approval of the contract in the amount of $80,425 with Cabar Engineering and allow us to move forward in our annual street rehabilitation project.
So included in this item, I noticed, is this pedestrian traffic signal. Cost for that?
That is the, we're addressing an issue there on, right out in front of, we've got to fix the drainage and whatnot at Serrano and Nichols. And with that item, we're trying to, to address that. So that would be a cost not to exceed for design to see, because we have drainage issues there. We also have pedestrian crosswalk issues. So we'd like to see if there's a better way to do that. So that cost is $8800. And if you are familiar, acutely familiar with that location, but it, it is a traffic glitch right now. So we're trying to, that hope is that this design work can help us get through and develop a, a better intersection right there, as far as the school drop-offs and pickups.
So two questions on this. One, given that I live three houses from that, want to make sure that I'm not at odds.
Todd, is that a? Todd?
Sorry, had to charge my phone. Given that you are three houses away, I would recuse yourself.
That's what I suspected. Gosh, I would love to weigh in on this one, but I guess I, Mayor Protem Rosini will need to pass this one along to you. And recuse.
All right. Well, this is gonna be fun on Zoom. All right. So do we have any public comment on this?
No.
Do we have any council member comments on this?
I guess this is Councilman Colacott. I have a comment.
Go ahead, Councilman Colacott.
Okay. First of all, I, we've worked with the Cabreras before. They've been volunteers on the Infrastructure Management Advisory Committee, excellent engineers, and I'm pleased that they were the low, low bid. We've been, as we've all experienced over the past several months, in fact, even going back to my earliest days on council, we've been beat about the head and shoulders by residents expressing concern about the deplorable condition of the pavements on their streets. And we never seem to be able to catch up. We, when, for example, when the residents from Churchill and Squires came to our council meeting a couple of months ago, we had to send them home. We don't have the money to do this. You don't have the money to fix your streets, even though those streets had not been touched since, since they were first constructed 55 and 60 years previously. So what I'd like to ask is if we could ask the, as part of, if we do award this to the Cabreras, if we could ask them to give us an estimate as to what it would cost to do a, at least a preliminary asset management plan, to tell us, okay, what is it gonna cost to maintain our streets, or to get our streets improved up to a levels where all the streets are in good shape, and maintain them in a good shape in the, in the future? We're looking at some major cost issues with our street maintenance over the next, in fact, this coming year and future years. As you've all seen, we've all, we're all aware of the impacts on inflation, everything else that we buy. We can assume that our street maintenance contracts, when we put those out to bid, are similarly going to be increased. But beyond that, the cost of crude oil has been going up, and we've seen the impact on the increase on gasoline. We can expect that asphalt will see similar kinds of cost increases. So the, our ability to even maintain a level of maintenance that we're currently doing is at question. We're also looking at, in the near future, of maintaining the major highways around Villa Park. For example, Villa Park Road in Wanda and Santiago. We've also had to postpone doing anything with meets, because, you know, if we worked on meets, we wouldn't be able to do any work on our residential streets. So I think it's time for us to sit, you know, to get a real good fix on what is it really costing, going to cost us to maintain our streets in the city, so that we can understand, do we have the resources to do that, or do we have to look at another alternative, you know, so that we, you know, this city discern, deserves good streets, good residential streets, good, you know, access streets, good primary arterial highways to our, to our city. But we've got to know, what is it's gonna cost, so that we can plan, develop plans to meet those needs. So I'd like to suggest, I'd like to move that we approve the contract, but also that we ask the Cabreras to give us an, an estimate as to what it would cost to do a preliminary asset management plan for our streets, so you get some idea of where, what we're facing.
So, Councilman, I think that's a very good idea, except I would caution that you, we did an RFP and six or five other firms have not yet been able, would not be able to comment on that. So I think an asset management plan, like they're suggesting, is well, well in line with what we should be doing. I would suggest that we do that as a separate RFP, and we can get a true estimate. And I think that's the case. And with respect to veering from the scope of the RFP, I'm a little leery of that, given that you have other firms that bid on something and, and we're doing it. So I think, and candidly, one of the things I was going to talk about later on is that there may be a potential from some of our federal monies, the AARP monies, to be able to use some of those on a discretionary basis to do some roadwork type of projects or along those lines. So I would like to, I would caution that we don't vary too far from the RFP scope of work, that we award the contract with this recommended firm, and that we pursue what you're suggesting as an alternate project as a priority, and bring back that to the council as a separate issue.
I'm good with that. You know, primarily, the primary need is that we need to understand what, you know, what are our costs going to be going forward, recognizing the cost of, increasing cost of labor, materials, and, you know, the additional projects that we're going to be facing over the next few years.
May I add another comment on that? Also, the city council has approved and awarded a contract to do the pavement management update, which should be starting in the next month, and which they would evaluate all the conditions of the pavement on all the streets. And with that, also, they'll be required to provide a schedule of all the improvements that is needed, according to the budgets that's available. And with that, we'll provide also, running different scenarios, is how much it costs if you want to improve all the streets or improve to have them reach at a certain level and so on. So some of those questions, which is Councilman Colacott is asking, they might be answered by, with the, the PMP, PMP update report, which will be coming, you know, before, in May or in June.
But I think we can, we can elevate that and sort of expand upon that based on what Councilman Colacott has suggested. So I think that's, I, I do want to report that we received a comment, a public comment was sent in, and it says, this is from the Covington family on, who live on the corner of Serrano and Nichols. It's indicating, please tell me they are not serious about putting a signal on our corner. We've had cable boxes, a cable tower, electric, electricity boxes, Edison poles that have been reinforced on our property, a blinking stop sign, and now they want to put a signal at the corner. This is just too much. It will make our street look like a major intersection, not to mention a major impact on our property value. I would rather have sidewalks and streetlights rather than a huge stop signal on our corner, and nobody wants that either. I thought I'd tell you first, we have never voiced opinion at City Hall in all the 34 and a half years we've lived there. We have accepted everything for the good of the city, but this we cannot do. I, I think I want to clarify in response to that real quickly, for the record. We're not talking about putting a signal in there. We're talking about a pedestrian, some sort of way means, to, to make sure that people know, people are, that pedestrians are crossing, and to limit crossing of pedestrians at a certain time. Right now, they're crossing one at a time, two at a time, in front of anybody. So we were thinking there had to be a way to improve that. So we're not talking about putting a signal, in a sense, and anything that would be implemented there or proposed there, designed for there, would be brought forward to a public, and make sure we got public review on that. So I wanted to, I probably didn't do it justice when I explained it to you, Mayor. We're not talking about putting a signal there. We're talking about putting a pedestrian safety measure in there of some sort. What that means, I don't know yet. I'm not a traffic expert, but I think the engineers can help us come up with something that we, you know, even if it's just a halt sign for pedestrians, don't walk, you know, type of thing. We need to do something that right now, we have potentially a very dangerous situation in kids getting out before and after school. So that's, I think, if that clears anything up, I certainly don't want people to think we're talking about putting a, a light there and a full signal there. That's certainly not what we're talking about. We're not trying to create a major intersection. We're trying to improve the drainage there and also deal with a pedestrian issue at the same time.
Thank you, Councilman Colacott, and thank you, Steve, for clarifying that. If I understand correctly, and I understand their concerns, and I would have those same concerns i- if I lived there, I would not want an overhead traffic signal or, or, you know, that you would see on a, a large artery. This is a, a much less significant measure that might be proposed. And I appreciate the fact it would go to a public hearing before anything would be implemented. If, Councilwoman Colacott, do you have any, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Miles, I beg your pardon, I beg your pardon. I'm all tongue-twisted. I beg your pardon. Crystal, do you have any comments?
No, just that I fully trust our staff and their recommendations.
Concur. Councilman Colacott, anything further?
I, I just want clarification. We're not, based on Akram's, our city engineer's comments, we're not looking at, you know, doing an assessment of what needs to be done, or what can we do with the money available, but rather, what needs to be done and what money was, must we make available so that we can properly maintain our streets?
I think you're right, Rockham. Rockham, let me, real quick, because I think what we'll come back with a separate item with the scope of work, so that the councilman, you'll have an opportunity to weigh in, if that helps, and we can talk about proposed funding for that and, and et cetera. So we can deal with that as sort of a separate issue, but we can continue to move forward on the annual street rehabilitation project for 2122.
Thank you. If, if, if nobody has anything further, do I have a motion on this?
So moved.
So moved.
All right, I, I hear a, a motion and a second. Steve, can you please call the roll?
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Miles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rosini?
Yes.
Okay, so that passes three zero. With one abstention and one absence, or one refusal.
And one cell phone that's charging now.
True. It's easy to get tongue-tied, Mayor Protem. I, you now you know how I feel when I'm mistakenly calling names.
Do not use, sir.
I apologize.
Okay, so I understand we're moving on to item 13 now. Our next item of new business is Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act of 2021. Staff, could you please give the staff report?
Yeah, real briefly, the council is, I mean, the city of Villa Park is receiving through the Corona, the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act of 2021, which basically allocated $900 billion in supplemental appropriations for COVID relief. We're going to receive through OCTA 200,000. We have to identify a specific project to move forward on that. Our focus was to come forward with a single project, and that would be Serra Villa Drive, which is on our list of items that needs to be done. And that would be what we're recommending that we submit as a resolution to OCTA in order to allow us to receive the 200,000.
Okay. Council members, do you have any questions of staff? Steve, is there anyone from the public that wrote in or is utilizing the raise hand feature to comment on this item?
Not that I can figure out. Light's going off and everything. Let's get back to regular meetings.
Do we have a motion or is there any other further discussion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Steve, would you please call the roll and take the vote?
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Miles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rosini?
Yes.
Mayor Zimmerman?
Yes. Thank you very, thank you very much, Steve. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off there. And actually, before we go on, I, well, I'm going to go back a step and just say thank you to Mayor Protem Rosini, very well done. Obviously, you have prior experience to this, but I appreciate the sudden nature and you stepping up to take over the previous item. Thank you very much.
My pleasure, thank you.
Item 14 is the city manager report. Steve, if you want to?
Yeah, this is the monthly report. There's no action required, but just a couple items of note. One, you'll see the focus we've discussed already on the housing element, which has taken up a lot of our time. Secondarily, you'll see progress being made, significant progress along the, the Villa Park Knowles. If you, we're, we're moving right along there, and we should be done not too far in the future. And then lastly, I, I wanted to report that the American Relief Act, I'm not sure, ARPA monies, what the acronym, the federal monies that were allocated. I mentioned that the city of Villa Park will be receiving $1.4 million. Of that amount, they'd already approved a budget of 50, a budget system for 50,000, but otherwise, we were talking about opportunities, and we were looking at the regulations. While the federal government has released the final regulations, and it appears that there is a standard deduction for potential revenue loss if you are within a certain size category, which means us. So just like on your income tax where you have a standard deduction, the city of Villa Park may be able to use 1.1 million or somewhere around a million of that. We're not sure exactly if that's restricted and how it can be used, but that potentially is a lot more discretion than we originally thought. So that would be claimed as revenue, revenue replacement for revenue lost, as a standard deduction. And so that would be, while we still have to account for it, it would not be something we'd have to prove that we lost that amount of revenue to relate to and to take that deduction. So that being the case, it would potentially be an opportunity for us to have that level of funding, if it's discretionary, to use on, to, to put in, to let our general fund use for general fund type purposes. So again, we're, we're still reviewing it, but it's one of the things that I was really sort of cautious of us moving forward too fast and too furious and fast, a lot of, a lot of entities have, because the final directions coming out sometimes are very different than the original directions. And so what might this, this might present, and I think it will present, a tremendous opportunity for the city of Villa Park to do things like Councilman Colacott has just suggested, is some, address some real pressing needs that the city has. Again, I'm, I need to clarify the language, and I know Todd and I are both looking at it. It's, it's, there's hundreds of pages of, of, of requirements, et cetera, but we're going through it and I, and looking at it, it does appear, I'm quite optimistic that we're going to have an opportunity there. And I'll report back when I get through the volume of, of thing, of the regulations and whatnot, because I think this could present a tremendous opportunity for a city the size of Villa Park. I'm, I'm optimistic that we'll have some answers before the budget this year, so we can incorporate that and get, potentially get something done that the council places as high priority. So I, I offer this note of optimism, because I think that's something that it's, it's, in times like this, it's really good to have something positive coming forward. Otherwise, I'm available to answer any questions that council may have.
Do council members have any questions? Okay. Steve, thank you very much for your report. And I think that moves us along to mayor and council member matters. Thought I heard somebody say something, but I just want to make sure. Okay, great. We'll now consider the, discuss the consideration of the 2022 City Council Committee assignments. I have gone ahead and accumulated the suggestions and requests from all of the other council members and put them into what I think is a fair proposal that matches the requests of pretty much everyone. There was really only one conflict where two members had asked for the same thing. And using my prior standard for how we resolve those matters, I chose, that's for the Community Services Foundation, both former Mayor Miles and former Mayor Pitts requested that position. And given that former Mayor Pitts had been in the position for multiple years, I elected to seat Mayor, former Mayor. I, you guys are all great mayors in my mind, so I keep thinking of you all as mayor. I know you guys have all done a great job of that, and so I'm trying to live up to that standard, and I, in my head, I'm still processing former mayor, but I'll try to do my best to, to address you properly. Anyway, that's the, the decision I made on that, and I'm taking comments from council members on my recommendations. Hearing none? Anybody? I'm assuming everybody's pleased or accepting of, of my recommendations. Steve, is there anyone from the public that wrote in or is utilizing the raise hand feature to comment on this item? Steve?
Mayor Zimmerman, I'd like to request if, if, okay with councilperson Miles, if I could be the lead on the Housing Legislative Committee?
Sure, I have no problem with that.
Okay, thank you.
So do I have a motion? Is there any further discussion? Do we have a, I guess we have a, a proposal for an amendment replacing, sorry, Councilmember Colacott as the lead on the Housing Legislation Committee?
No objection, and so moved.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second?
A second.
Fantastic. We have a motion and a second. Steve, could you please call a roll and take the vote?
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Miles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rosini?
Yes.
Mayor Zimmerman?
Yes. Could you read the report, or results, please?
Passes four zero, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. So that takes us to the last item, which is now time for individual council member information items. And I'll go ahead and start with Councilmember Colacott.
No comments?
Council, Councilwoman Miles?
Thank you. I wish everyone a happy new year. Huge, successful winter wonderland and boat parade and Santa tour. So a big shout out to all the individuals that made all those activities run. One of the big things along the lines of speaking about SB nine, SB 10, I was asked and honored to host an event at my home just Saturday, this past Saturday, in support of the Our Neighborhood Voices, the ballot initiative to repeal SB nine and 10. And we had a fabulous turnout, and two of the authors of the initiative that they were trying to get on the, on the ballot, Redondo Beach, Redondo Beach Mayor Bill Brand and York City Councilwoman Peggy Wang, both attended the event. It was wonderful to get to speak with them and advocate for getting this on the ballot along with the director, chairperson of, of Our Neighborhood Voices, Mr. John Heath. So he zoomed in. It was great to see our community come together at my home. We had some of our residents, and then we had people from neighboring communities and other electeds attend as well. So hopefully, we'll be having another one of those to make sure that we get the signatures needed to be able to put this on the ballot so that we can really get back to having local control on this issue. Other than that, looking forward to 2022.
Thank you very much. Fantastic. Mayor Protem Rosini?
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you, and congrats on nearly concluding your first meeting. I, I want to thank you. Can you all hear me? I'm getting a lot of feedback. Hello?
There you go. I think you're good now.
Okay. Good evening. I just wanted to say, congrats to you, Mayor, on nearly concluding your first meeting. And I wanted to extend a huge thank you to all of our volunteers in the community and to all of our council members for their, their efforts to lead our city and the incredible job that Mayor Miles did last year. Truly, truly groundbreaking in, in many regards. I want to thank staff for everything that they've done, and I look forward to 2022.
Thank you very much. You know, I, I'm, was starting to allude to this previously, that sitting on a council with four former mayors is maybe a little bit daunting, but also the amount of encouragement I've received from each of you has made this a lot easier. I very much appreciate it. I know there are some very big shoes. Each of the other former mayors has done a spectacular job in their year of, of completing the duties, given the challenges of each year. And as Mayor Protem Rosini points out, this past year in particular, Crystal Miles did a fantastic job as mayor and taking over the, the reins from her. You know, I learned a lot and have learned a lot from each of you, and I really am hoping to do my best to represent the city and to not mess up as much as possible. Let's, let's put it that way. Anyway, I, I don't have anything else to report, and therefore, I will call this meeting to an adjournment. Thank you all for attending.